So, let's call this meeting to order on December 3rd at 7:00 PM. This is a city council meeting of Oak Ridge, held both virtually and at the Willamette Activity Center for those who chose that method. If we will all take our appropriate stances. Trudy, where's your flag? Ta-da! Brian, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes ma'am. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. And Jackie, will you call the roles?
Yes. Mayor Holston.
Here.
Councillor McClelland.
Here.
Councillor Whitney.
Here.
Councillor Forcombe.
I saw you.
I saw. Councillor Forcombe.
I was telling you.
Councillor Hollitt.
Okay.
Councillor Kenyon.
Here.
Okay. Looks like we don't have Councillor Hollitt yet. Well, just keep our eyes open. If someone sees her pop in, say something. And we'll go from there. Do we have any additions, corrections, or adjustments? I know we have one addition, 10.4, the SCA agreement. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes ma'am. That's the only one you have.
Is that the only one that you have? Okay. And I also thought that we... Are you going to have... Because I don't know if this is an addition or not. Is Sarah Ultimus, are you on the line?
She is on the line. And she's going to lead off the discussion on the strategic plan.
Okay, perfect. All right. I wondered how that was going to work and hadn't gotten a chance to touch bases with you. So, thank you. That answered my question. And I don't have any counsel. Do you have any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda? Um... Go ahead. What do you have, Councillor Kenyon?
I don't know if I mentioned it here or at the consent agenda, but I would like to move the minutes out.
You would like to move the minutes out of the consent agenda? Yeah. Let's do that right now then. So, we'll move the minutes out of the consent agenda. And we'll move them into... We'll go ahead and put it under business from the city council. So, we can address it that way. Okay. So, it'll be 9.1. Don't let me pass by. All right. Any other? Okay. All right. Let's move forward then. This is public comment time. And if... Let's start with individuals who are at the WAC. Is there anybody at the WAC who is wanting to make public comments?
We do have people at the WAC, but no comments here.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody online that... Let me get my big screen going here so I can see everybody, that would like to make a public comment? If you have the ability to raise a hand, I see Trudy's hand popped up. That is great. If you don't have the ability to raise a hand, or not sure how to do it, you can unmute yourself and say your name, and I will put you in the queue. So, Trudy, would you like to unmute yourself and do your public comment, please?
My name is Trudy Hammond. I live at 47752 Berry Street, Oak Ridge, Oregon. And my question is in regards to the wood chipper. Is Portland the only area where we've researched renting a wood chipper from at that cost?
Trudy, yes, I believe so. The city administrator did the due diligence to find one, as far as renting it. So, we're still in the process.
Well, I was... Because I was wondering about one being closer, where it might save time and money for like Lain County or Roseburg.
And that's always an excellent suggestion. I'm sure that the city administrator has looked far and wide to see if we can find one closer. And right now, we don't, you know... We'll be looking for something again in the spring to do that chipping. But in the meantime, we're still looking at coming together as a county to figure out how to accomplish this also. So, thanks, Trudy. Good suggestion. Anyone else? I can't see. If you wanted to make comment and I don't hear anybody.
Yeah, this is Audi.
Yes, Audi, go ahead.
I don't know how to get a hand up on this computer.
Okay.
I got a hand up there and I tried. Hello? I would like to find out a couple things. New councillor Lex. When do we get our councillor booklets?
Mm-hmm.
For new councillors? And how... That's one question. The other question is, how are we going to be sworn in? Is it on computer? Or how do we do this?
Two really good questions. And can I address that during mayor's comments?
Yes, you sure can.
Thanks, Audi. Oh, and Audi, I sent you an email too. You might check your email and get back to me if you will.
Yeah, I was on computer all day today, class.
Oh, okay. That's right. Okay. Any other comments? I don't see any other hands waving, so I'm going to move on. Okay. Good. Let me make this smaller here. Mayor's comments, announcements, and proclamations. Okay. Let me get my thing together here. I have several that I just want to go over quickly. We'll start, Audi, with answering your questions. We are going to be doing... I'd hope that we would be able to do some sort of version of virtual... Virtual login. Hey, Brian, can you take down the agenda? So, we can see the participants until we're back in it again? Is that possible for you to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I don't know why it's really difficult when all I see is that... There's everybody again. There we go. So, anyway, yes, we're going to be doing a virtual. We don't know exactly what the format is, but we will get information out to you about it. As far as your booklets, you don't have your booklet, because I've been going through it and I haven't gotten it back to Brian, and he's been bugging me. So, you will be getting your city handbook, your city councillor handbook next week sometime. And I will probably just save toward the end. And if you get it sooner, then that's great. But I'm just about through with it. And I'll get it back to Brian, so he can make copies and get it to you. Let's see. We move on. We had a citizen alert us that the LTD bus was running, just a small one, than the Diamond Express, not the big one. And at times, it was completely crowded. And there were concerns about the whole COVID thing. So, the city administrator and I made inquiries, and Brian came up with the answers. Evidently, our large bus is having mechanical issues of some sort. And there was a lot of discussion between the manufacturer, who retooled it. And for those of you who were on council at the time, if you remember, there was a very long conversation about, do we want to get a refurbished bus? Do we want to get a new bus? Could we afford to? What couldn't, couldn't we do? So, we ended up getting a refurbished bus with a warranty. Evidently, the manufacturer is not being very cooperative about the warranty. But what that has resulted in is LTD just saying, "Okay, fine, we'll fix it." So that we can get back to the big bus and keep our riders a little farther apart. Swearing of councillors, there you go. Today and tomorrow is a red advisory day. If you have questions about what that means, counsel, please push your inquiries to the Oak Ridge Air website. There's a lot of really good information there that can help answer questions that you may have from constituents as to why this is going on and what's happening. But in essence, we've got an inversion going on. And so, all that smoke in the evening sticks around until it begins to clear out, you know, mid-morning or so. So, just be aware of that. Chrissy, have you popped in yet? You did, I see her.
I'm here.
Okay. Hi. So, when council comments come, will you be talking about the lighted parade?
Yes, I will.
Awesome. Thank you. And the Christmas tree, is it up and ready yet, Brian?
It is up. I saw it today.
Woo-hoo! I didn't drive that far down the street today. I've been kind of in meetings all day long. So, that will be up, and we will have it lit. I wanted to point out, and I passed this email off just a little bit ago to all of you councillors, that there is a new grant application for businesses. Please, if you are in contact with businesses, let them know that. And this information is available on the county website. And we're happy to answer questions for businesses who have, who would like to put in for this. It's a much fairer system than was before. And so, we expect more rural areas to be able to take advantage of the money that is available. So, let's move on from that. Also want to... I just, you know, this community, we, as many of you know, a member of our community passed away this last week, Lauren Hoag, who was a candidate for city council. And I just want to acknowledge his service into the community. He was very active in many committees, and he had a passion for Oak Ridge and for its governance, and seeing it grow. And he will be missed by many people. So, just to honor him right now. Also, Dave Devanzo passed away. And many of you don't know who that... May not know who that is. But he was the liaison with Lain Electric to the city for many years and participated in meetings, committee meetings, helped facilitate the snowflakes and did all that. And he stepped down about five years ago, but he did pass away about a week ago. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that also. And I believe the chamber is sending an acknowledgement and an appreciation card to his family on their behalf. And let's see. What else do I have in here? COVID, Christmas lights, LTD, COVID. As you all know, we are out of our two-week period, but we are into high-risk restrictions. So, in essence, we're kind of the same we are. Our restaurants can resume outdoor, as well as takeout or delivery, but they cannot do indoor seating at all still. Our numbers are still rising, as you all know here in Oak Ridge. A little at a time, we're creeping up. We need not to get complacent, because we see a vaccine in the future. I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but don't forget that the tunnel still holds a train. It can still run us over. So, encourage everyone that you come in contact with to stay safe and follow all the protocols. Let's see. That is all I have. So, let's move on to council comments. And Chrissy, the floor is yours.
Hello. Well, this is kind of unfortunate, but we've had a lot of discussion in the fire department with volunteers. And unfortunately, I think we're probably going to have to cancel this meeting, or this event possibly postpone. And there's a number of reasons why. I think if, you know, if we are to go on with it, the restrictions make the event so much different than what it was in the past. But beyond that, we have some pretty key players that are out sick. And they're on their test... They've tested for COVID, and they do not have COVID. Or I should say, they tested negative. However, you know...
You cut out, Chrissy. We don't hear you now. It's okay.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
So, in any normal event, when people are sick, you know, they don't participate in these types of things. So, unfortunately, I think it's probably going to be... We're not going to be able to do the parade this weekend. And that saddens me, because it definitely look forward to it. But I guess, you know, here's to 2021.
Oh, well, you know, that is unfortunate, Chrissy. But I know that it, you know, it's the right thing to do when you're being responsible about it to the community. I would say that, you know, in light of that, if you're able to pull it together somehow, then that's great. If you can't, we'll look forward to a great event next year. There is, I saw, an invitation to participate in a ringing of the bells on Christmas Eve in Oak Ridge. And it's on Facebook. I will push it over to you, Chrissy, so you can push it. And Dawn too, on your page.
Where is that?
That... Well, it's nationwide evidently. But I think I saw... I think the first post I saw came from Michelle Emmons.
Oh, yes.
Quite a few people jumped on it and said, "Oh, that sounds great." So, I think that's something maybe we can push as a council too, and encourage everyone to participate in ringing of the bells for two minutes. And I think it's like 2:00 or something like that. But we'll get that out there too.
I do want to mention that we do still have the Santa suit. And Audi Spleeloff is the one that's been our Santa for the last couple of years. So, I'm sure he would still be willing to come light the tree.
Okay. Well, we'll put some thought into that, since we can't really gather everyone together or ask them to come down and watch it. Perhaps we'll just light the tree and ask everybody to take some time throughout the holiday to come down and enjoy the tree on their own, with their families, and/or with their puppies, and just enjoy it. Audi, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm available to come down and do the lighting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I will be in touch with you then, Audi. And we'll figure out something. I appreciate that. Hearts to you, Trudy. Counsel, do you have any other comments? Okay. I don't see any hands, Whiteland.
Sorry.
Not a problem. Hi, Dawn. So, let's move on to... We're going to move past the consent agenda and into the business at the city council. Yes?
Kathy, you may not have heard me. I actually did have a council comment.
Oh, yes, please. I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Okay. Excuse me. At the November 5th... Sorry. The November 5th meeting, we discussed the motion approved last May on the water tower project. I made a motion that we table it, and it passed. We talked about waiting until after the New Year or the spring. And then, at the November 19th meeting, Mayor Holston asked the council to have a discussion about it again. Councillor Hollitt specifically requested for it to be discussion only, because it's in our council rules that no item shall be placed on the agenda unless it is ready for council action and/or consideration. We have not received any quotes or solicited for artwork to find out what that part would look like. And Mayor Holston agreed that it would be for discussion only, because so many people had come to give their opinions on the public comment. We can look on any agenda and find this statement in the public comment section. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. The council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. Mayor Holston then made a motion at this discussion, breaking her own word and council rules on public comment. But I would just also like to add that she didn't follow Robert's Rules of Order, where in order to discuss it again, it needs to be removed from the table. That's a parliamentary procedure. I'm disappointed in all of this disregard of the rules and processes in order to accommodate backdoor deals.
Are you concluded?
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's move on then to business of the city administrator. Oh, nope. Business of the city council. Dawn, 9.1. You wanted to... We want to approve the minutes, but you would like to move it into an area where we can discuss it. So, let's entertain a motion to approve the minutes, and then we can go on to discuss that. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from November 5th?
I make a motion that we approve the November 5th meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
All right. This is open for discussion. Dawn, would you like to lead out?
Thank you. I had actually sent a request to Brian to make this adjustment, but I didn't get any word back. So, I checked on the city website to see if they had been updated. And there's two revisions on the city website, but neither of them reflect the request that I had made. So, I wanted to talk about it.
Okay. Go ahead. What was your request?
On page 4 of 6, it says that Councillor Kenyon moved to table this motion. Are you trying to find it?
Yeah, I am. Hold on. Councillor Kenyon. 4 of 6, you said?
It might actually be... That's what I had. But then again, the minutes have been updated. So, it's going to be...
Oh, I see it. Well, yes, I see it. So, it's like the fourth line down. Motion, Councillor Kenyon, move to table this motion. Councillor Hollitt seconded the motion. Is that where you're looking at?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah. But I had requested to have that changed, to say, Councillor Kenyon made a motion to table it, not move to table this motion.
Okay. And does that... Is that consistent with what we hear on the transcript? I'm not aware that you asked this to be changed. So, I'm going with what you said.
Yeah. I have... I don't know if I have it in front of me, but I had sent Brian the exact minutes. I had rewatched the video to make sure. And I said the exact minute and second where it appears in the video.
Okay.
So, I would just like to hold off on approving these until that's been updated.
I agree.
But then I also wondered, since there are two other revisions that have been made, could we know what they are? So, we don't have to read the entire thing again to see what else got updated? Does that make sense?
This is the CEA, if I might.
Sure. Absolutely. Go ahead.
First, on the correction to the minutes, I've directed Jackie to make that correction. And so, if you want to hold off till next month, next meeting to pass it, you can, or you can just accept that they're going to be made. Secondly, I'll cease putting revisions on there. It just makes it too complex. The reverse revision was the inclusion of the strategic plan inside the packet. And the second revision was the inclusion of the grant in the packet.
Okay.
Oh. Okay. So, it's a whole packet revision, not a minutes revision?
Okay. Got it. All right. So, yeah, I agree. So, we have a motion. It was seconded. I would... Councillor Whitney, you made the motion, correct?
Yes.
Would you like to withdraw the motion? And we can bring these back up again at the next, after they've been corrected?
Yes, I would like to withdraw my motion.
All right. Thank you. That motion is withdrawn. And we will put this back onto the agenda for the next meeting with the correction in place. Thank you, councillor. I appreciate that. Okay. Now, let's move on into business from the city council. Any further business from the city council that you would like to bring up? I can hear voices, but I don't know if that's a councillor. So...
Do we still need to approve our consent agenda?
There is nothing in the consent.
Oh, because it doesn't... Never mind. We took that out.
We removed it out.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah. If I don't hear... I can't see you, because the agenda is on the screen. So, if you're trying to wave at me and say, "Yes, Mayor, I have something that I want to say as a councillor," I can't see you.
Kathy?
Yes.
I interject. Up in the top-left-right corner of your screen, where it says "View", you can select side-by-side gallery. And then, you'll be able to see the...
Okay. I mean it.
Do you see it?
Ah! Got it! Thank you, Councillor Kenyon. I knew there was a way for me to see this too.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. I don't see anybody. So, let's move on then to business from the city administrator, 10.1. Brian, you are up.
A quick update. If you recall a previous meeting, I told you it... We had one staff member in isolation and one in quarantine. Both of those folks are back on duty and clean. However, we have another member in quarantine. So, we'll just work through it. And they're asymptomatic, so it's not a huge concern right now. And they'll be quarantined for seven days and tested. And if they're clean, they'll come back. To give you just a little more detail on the city hall status, so, when I initially got the rumor of the executive order with this risk categories, it looked... And knowing that we were in an extreme risk in Lain County, my decision was to keep the city hall closed, as it has been for the two-week freeze. However, after reading the order today, Executive Order 2066, they do make an exception for local governments to operate for flexibility purposes. So, what I'm going to do is open city hall back up, much like it operated before the two-week freeze. So, we'll have one individual in the front office that would wait on people. And if it's up to the finances director, whether he needs to be in or not, but I would encourage his work. As with the economic development coordinator, I'll be in the office. And if anyone's in the same room with anyone, they put on a mask. And that includes waiting on the public. So, we'll keep it that way until we get other guidance. And the next sort of milestone would be if Lain County comes out of extreme. There are some differences that might happen there. So, that's the plan going forward. They're going to evaluate the... As you look at this new framework they have, they're going to be reevaluating the risk categories of all the counties every two weeks. So, what will happen is you can react to that. They'll give you a week to react, to change the status. The status is determined. What's driving Lain County's problem is the number of cases per 100,000 people. So, Lain County, last I checked, was somewhere around 277. And extreme, the threshold for extreme is 200. So, that would be the kind of the next hurdle. The other data point they use to determine your risk category, I believe, is the positivity rate, which Lain County's fine. They're around 2.2-something, I think, the threshold. And that's actually a low threshold. So, that's not the problem. It's the cases per 100,000. That's kind of a description. That's kind of a description, so to expand a little bit on the grant that the mayor mentioned, it's a $3.6 million total grant. The window, which was the problem with the last one, the window is going to be open from now until December 13th. And this is focused on businesses with employees less than 25, which is all of Oak Ridge. And they have thresholds on what your, what your allotment or your grant would be, depending on how many employees you have, or whether you're a sole proprietor. So I encourage you to go to the City Facebook site or the Lane County Economic Development site, they both have the details there. And this grant's going to be operated by Community Lending Works, who's done a lot of the, the previous stuff already. So encourage your, your businesses to get out there if they need it and apply. There will be a Toys for Tots Saturday on the 12th. And to get a number, you, you show up on Friday, and they'll give you a number through the door at the, at the Fire Department, all day Friday. The Toys for Tots, the event is on Facebook, I think it starts at four and goes to six. We received a Business Oregon PPE shipment today, which is, they've given, they're giving the city PPE for, for us to distribute to businesses, and the Chamber is going to do the distribution. We're storing it for them at the old Public Works site, and as they, because it's such a large shipment, two pallets worth, and they'll, they'll work those down as the businesses need them. And there also is an option for a round two, so we'll see if the Chamber, as they talk to the businesses, if we think we need to have another distribution. Lastly, the restroom at the Diamond View Park is nearing completion, they've got the electricity hooked up, and I saw the plumber there today, they're painting, and then it should be done. And once we get the, the exact cost, or the near, near exact cost of what that is, we'll determine how big a pavilion and how we do that. So go give it a look, drive by if you, if you haven't recently, it's, it looks small, but it's, it'll be a nice restroom. And that's all I got for an update, if you, can we go to the next 10.2, Mayor?
Yeah, that, that's true, and I, and I do want to point out to everyone, if you talk to businesses, is that this money that is available, that's, that's the amount of money that is available just to Lane County. And also that this is not a loan, this is a grant. This is not money you have to pay back, so, you know, encourage businesses to apply for it. Dawn, is that a hand?
Yes, yes, I was just, going to pop on the City website, but I'll just ask if all the businesses that we have business licenses for, does anyone know if the email addresses are on the City?
Yes.
Site, because I'd be willing to sit down and send that email out to everyone.
But I appreciate that, and the Chamber actually has been doing that all along, is using that and populating it further as we get more emails. They've also been going door-to-door and talking to businesses, as well as calling them on the phone, so.
I wondered about this specific one, have you already passed it to the Chamber to do that, or?
They already have it, and I think she said she did that this afternoon, is what I see. And thanks, Dawn, as she says, thank you, Dawn.
Yeah, I'm glad you said that, because I was going to ask about the Chamber and if they would do that, so that's great.
Yeah, they have been very active in keeping up and passing information on to businesses, helping them hook up individuals that need a translation in order to apply for loans, helping them to hook up with Raj, with Rain, to assist if there was questions about how to do it, so they've been really, really on top of it, thank you. That's good stuff. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Okay, this is agenda item 10.2.
Hold on, Brian, Melissa, I see your message, she says, I manage a business and I haven't received any data. Okay, well, now that I've said that out loud, and Linda is on the phone, my guess is she'll be calling you, Melissa. Let me know. Go ahead, Brian.
It's item 10.2, and the title's Available Training for Newly Elected Officials. The exhibits, the background information on it, and the proposed action would be a motion from the floor to approve training for whichever counselors are, are seeing fit to attend. The issue is that it's being offered December 12th, 2020, from 8:30 to 12:30. For newly elected officials, the cost is $150 a person for multiple attendees, or if it's just a single counselor, or it's $300 a person for a single attendee. The financial impact is to be decided depending on the numbers. The remaining budget line for training for council is $11,971. Your options are to approve the training for new elected counselors, or do not approve the training for new elected counselors. We're recommending option one, and the motion's before you.
You'd like to make a motion?
Go ahead.
I move to approve the Portland State University Training Newly Elected Officials Leadership Academy for the newly elected counselors.
Second, and I heard a second from Chrissy, open for discussion. Brian, I thought, actually, it was $300 for the first, first person, and 150 for any, any additional.
Right, exactly, that's what I meant.
Okay, good. Good, and I will say that when I was first elected as a counselor, and Josh McIntosh, I think his last name was, was also elected at the same time, he and I went up and attended this up in Portland. And the Hatfields Center does a great job, now I don't know how that translates into, into a virtual, you know, Zoom meeting attendance, but it was probably the best training that I, that I received and would like to have been able to attend every year, but there is a cost to it, obviously. And so I encourage those of you that are newly elected to, to attend. It will be well worth your while. If it's anything like what I attended, it gives you the opportunity to just really delve into the nuts and bolts, and what does this mean, and who am I, and, and I'm a counselor now, and oh my gosh, what have I done? It is just really, really good, so I encourage you all to do it if you'd like to. Dawn, I see a hand up, is there any other counselor also, if so, please? Go ahead, Dawn, while I look at the list here.
I just wanted to know if this one in particular, I can't attend because I have another thing scheduled that day, but I wondered if it was something that, when you sign up, they automatically bill the city? Or do the counselors need to pay and be reimbursed, or how do we know? Do we know?
I recommend the counselor to pay and get reimbursed.
Okay. And if that, you know, if that is an issue for any of the counselors, please don't hesitate to, to let myself or the City Administrator know, and we can work something out. And get that taken care of.
Okay.
Okay, great. All right, Brian, go ahead. Oh, wait, wait to vote on this, guys. Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor McClelland?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, let's move on then to the 10.3, go ahead.
10.3 is the Oak Ridge Disc Golf Course MOU. It's, the exhibit is the MOU itself in the draft form, and the proposed action is a motion from the floor to approve the memorandum of understanding. So on the 20th, as you remember, back in February, City Council gave approval to develop this golf course. And then on the 21st of May, they authorized $7,000 in TRP funds to put toward the development. The Parks and Community Services Committee was tasked with developing an agreement between the two to delineate the shared responsibility of maintaining the park. As well, there was some interface with the club and Public Works to kind of hammer out the details. The MOU is, is rather at, you know, high level, and the details are, have been agreed to with the Public Works and the, and the club. This agenda items provide City Council with the, with the draft, and take a look at it and see if they're okay with it. Fiscal impact is to be decided, I don't anticipate any. The options are to approve the MOU as written, or direct the revision to the MOU, or kick it back to the committee, or whatever you'd like to do to get that fixed, if you have problems. We're recommending option one, and the motion's before you. I will tell you, I did have the City Attorney go over some of the legal clauses in the indemnity clause and all that kind of thing, and he did make a couple changes, minor changes that aren't structural at all, to the indemnity paragraph. But other than that, it was, it was fine.
Thank you, Brian. Do we have a motion?
I move to direct a revision to the MOU.
Well, I, I can't, we, okay, so.
Recommended.
You want to approve the MOU, so you want to.
Oh, memorandum of understanding.
No, I know that, you want to direct a revision to the MOU?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's discuss the revision. I don't, we can't necessarily approve a motion to revise it if we don't know what you want to revise it to. So let's talk about it.
That was the suggested motion.
No, the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Oak Ridge and the Oak Ridge Disc Golf Club. What are we looking at? We're looking at different things, I think, Dawn.
No, right above that, a couple lines up, there's two options, approve it as written, or direct a revision to the MOU.
Okay.
I would just think that if we discuss it, and nobody else wants the revision, that it would fail, and then we would move to the other one, is.
Okay, well, let's, why don't we do what we've done before and just open this up for discussion? Because I have some questions about it, too, and then we can determine whether or not we want to make, make changes to it, and, and then move forward with that. So Dawn, would you like to start the discussion by maybe introducing those things that you think might need revision?
Sure. So to start off with, I have a couple things I think need revised, but also a ton of questions, so I don't, I don't know if you want.
Let's start with questions. Because I have questions, too. Keep going.
Well, I guess I'll just start with the, the first revision, that's the order I have it in.
Okay, go for it.
It's in the first paragraph, and it references a map as Exhibit A, which is, by the way, not a current map, but I don't know if that's relevant. But the, dang it, I didn't write what I wanted. So first paragraph. Oh, that was it, just to reference that the map wasn't, sorry, the map's not up to date. But in the sixth paragraph.
Right.
One, two, three. It says, or I'd like to consider adding after the word barrier. I'd like to add on Lot 4. Because it doesn't delineate, and there's actually two different barriers, one at each end of of that whole entire park, so I thought it should be added that it's the one on Lot 4 that's going to get moved.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you're right, there is two, two barriers. So you, they're going to relocate the barrier closest to the fish hatchery.
Right.
Correct?
Correct, and I believe that's Lot 4.
I think that's what is 4, yeah.
My next one was, I had a question on paragraph 7. Is, I wanted to know what the abatement areas are on the lots that it says the City will continue to maintain the abatement areas?
Okay. Go ahead.
So it looks like Brian is circling on the map where the abatement areas are. And so what does that mean? Is there like a bunch of stuff buried in those areas?
Yes, yes and no, Brian, maybe you can address that. It's my understanding that that is an area that was, we were told that we could not, I think it was specific enough that we couldn't dig into, that we had to refrain from building upon because it isn't stable. That type of thing, Brian, does that cover it? Because I'm doing this from memory here.
I would have to get with, with Robert and, and give you an accurate answer to that, because I'm not in the know.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, for some reason, I keep remembering, you know how we've had conversations in the past about the levee and how the old, part of our old school was buried where part of the levee is, and that's impacted all the drilling and stuff? I think that area also has some things buried there that's from the mill. So I'm thinking like the oil drums and different things like that, that if they're disturbed, could really create some issues.
Yeah, so I, I, I will make sure that we're not, we, we don't speak like in the terms of oil drums, because anything like that was not, was taken out, taken care of, that type of thing, but there is that area, I believe, from what I was told, is that it is, it is not, it is not solid enough ground to build upon, nothing should be built upon it, as far as weight bearing, that type of thing. I know when we had a consideration for a mobile home park to go in there, that whole area had to be left open and clear. So it, I think it has something to do with, with the substructure in it, so.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, no, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to also understand what it means when it says the City will continue to maintain. Is that like the mowing and whatnot, or what does maintain mean?
Yes, it's a, it's, we have machinery capable of mowing large areas easily, and the club cannot. And so we would have to maintain it by mowing it in any case, so that's why the statement's in there.
Okay. So then on paragraph 8, could you explain the parcel leased to the fish hatchery?
They have a 99-year lease, which is part of their, because it has settling ponds for their breeding pools. And so they have a 99-year lease, and they, what their request is, is that no baskets go beyond the high water mark of their estuary there. So that's, that's the reason that is in there, because I think when we first started out, there was a basket that was just inside. It's not an issue this year, because they only doing a half of the stocking. But next year, they met, met a plan on full capacity, so they're concerned, so we put that in it to make sure the club kept their baskets out of the high water mark, inside the high water mark.
Okay, so I just really wanted to clarify that the, because I think we discussed this before, the City actually does own that land back there, but the fish hatchery leases the waterway, is that right?
No, they, they actually have a parcel of land that has a 99-year lease, which includes, which includes all that water.
Yeah, it's that item that I brought up, like two or three meetings ago, probably three meetings ago. The last time we talked about this, I said that there was a lease, yeah, yeah, and it is the property, the whole.
Okay. Yeah.
But it, so obviously they're okay with the, the whole park being placed there?
Yes.
Okay. So then, on paragraph 9, who are the stakeholders that the City and the Disc Golf Club will collaborate with? What does that mean?
Generic statement, should, should something come up with the parks, if people want to do something else with the park, or, you know, it's, it's a blanket statement that we will work with if issues arise with any other parties, but we will work with them to take care of it. And the club will also participate.
Okay, so then that probably is similar to the paragraph 10, where it says the Disc Golf Club will enhance the park educational and recreational opportunities for residents as well as excellent revenue stream possibilities with partnerships and local recreation groups. I wanted to, I wanted to understand what all of that meant. And city recreation programs, rentals, community group functions.
So as you know, they're, they are doing some historical things with the layout and the, and the kiosks that they have there, as far as recognizing the old mill and recognizing the prior to the mill being there. So there is some educational piece to it. And then when we look at revenue streams, really referring to if they, if it does get popular, and we get a lot of people here, that will bring in revenue in ways, for that, not only for them, but I would think for the City indirectly through the businesses in here that the people visit. So that's all that means.
Okay. And then the indemnification part, did you have a copy to send out to us how that changed?
I'll pull it up right now if you'd like.
Thank you, more importantly, I'm hoping Jason's with us, because I'd like to find out.
I am, Dawn.
Okay. I'd like to find out how his board feels about the indemnification. Whoops, somehow I lost the view, are you pulling that up, Brian?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Okay.
Take a minute. So this are the changes that the City Attorney recommended to the indemnification paragraph.
And is that what's reflected on here, Brian?
No, only on the screen, because it came in late, so.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying, got it.
So this, the changes are in red?
Correct.
And is this an appropriate time to talk to Jason about this, or do you want to do that?
Well, actually, it's, it's not, because this is what we approved as being presented to them. It's up to them at his board then to look at it and say they agree or don't agree, and get back to us. Because he has a board.
Right, okay, so then my last question, I guess, is on the volunteer statement that, you know, they're required to sign a li, a release of liability, which makes sense, but I'm wondering who will be enforcing or managing that? I mean, what happens if a volunteer is working and they haven't signed a waiver?
Then they're not covered.
Not covered by the City Insurance Policy, if, if something would happen. And Jason tracks the hours and the times, so, because there is some sort of accountability, you have to have it, if someone does get hurt, so. It's his responsibility to track that volunteer time.
Okay. Those are all my questions.
Well, Dawn, good job, I think, I think you covered everything that, that I had kind of had questions about, too, and had asked my questions earlier about, to see what they were. The only other thing I want to make sure is that, you know, as far as the fiscal impact, I know that we typically take care of that property anyway, on a limited basis, to make sure that we cut down the weeds, that they don't get too high, especially during fire season, we want to make sure that all that weed abatement is done. So it costs us money to do that, but is my understanding then that the City will still be in charge of the large areas? We will use our machinery and our manpower to make sure that is done. We will also be in charge then of keeping the, the parking area cleared and, and cleaned? Is that true? And then also, the club is going to take on the responsibility of maintaining all of the, all of the fairways, the, the, do they call them greens? The, the poles with the chains on them, and the stands where you throw the discs, how do you like all that, Jason?
Yes. Yes, yes, they are, they are called greens.
Are called greens and fairways, okay. So the, the clubs will take care of those, the City will take care of the large, the large areas. And is the City taking care of the park, parking lot, or is the club taking care of it, or will it be a joint effort?
Initially, it, because it's quite a bit of work in the beginning to clear some of that small stuff in the, in the blackberries, it'll be a joint effort.
Okay.
I was, I would think once we get it where we want it, it should be relatively easy to maintain and that'll probably be a club function, but we'll, we'll talk about that with Jason.
Okay, all right, that sounds good. And also I just want to make sure, sure that it is, it is clear. And it is clear in this as well as in the understanding we have as a council that, that the Disc Golf Club sits on the park that the city owns. And that anything that is done to the park as far as your signage and Jason, I saw a picture of the signs, they're there. That's awesome. The signage or the mural or added seating or benches that you have an understanding that all that needs to be approved, not by council, but it needs to be approved by the, by the city before you go put anything in as far as location and that type of thing. Is that an understanding that is, that you also agree with?
I agree.
Okay, do you think that is reflected in the MOU? Because I, I'm not sure that is reflected in there.
It, it doesn't go to that level of detail.
Okay. I, you know, and I understand the difference between the MOU. So an MOU is not a contract. When you get down to the specifics of who is in charge of what, that becomes a contract. And so I'm comfortable with this as long as we have that general understanding that this is, that we, we will do everything we can to support you and you will do everything you can to let us know what you're doing. So I'm, I'm cool with this. Council, do you have any other questions? Do I see any other waving hands of counselors back there?
Kathy, I'd like to know how the council feels about adding that one thing on lot number four on the sixth paragraph.
Okay, about the parking area barrier closest to the fish hatchery. Is that the one we're talking about?
Yes.
Council, can we hear from, from you? How do you all feel about this? Paul, where are you with this? Oh, I see a thumbs up, a big yellow thumbs up. That's awesome. Audie, we're going to teach you how to do that too, by the way. Chrissy, how are, how do you feel about that?
Um, I think it's fine with me. It doesn't really infringe on an area that's being used by someone else, correct?
That is very correct.
I mean, I, basically the property we're talking about is directly across the street from your house, Don.
No, it's down the road across from the, a little bit lower than the first entrance to the fish hatchery. There's across the street, there's like an old driveway that has a big gate.
The one that's heavily wooded.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so same thing. It's not, it's not infringing on anything else essentially. It's unused area, so it sounds great to me.
Okay, Counselor Whitney, how are you doing with that?
I'm fine with it. I actually added it into any possible motion that I might make, so.
Counselor McClelland, are you okay with all of this? Okay.
Yes, I, I think it's a good use of the space.
I do too, I do too. Okay, so then having had all this discussion and we definitely want to make in addition to closest to the fish hatchery in this paragraph concerning relocating the parking area barrier. With that change, then can we have a motion that would include that?
I'm, I'll make a motion and I'm just going to be general about the changes. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding, including the suggested changes between the City of Oak Ridge and this Oak Ridge Disc Golf Club.
Okay.
I second.
That's Counselor Forkum seconded. Any further discussion, counsel? Okay, Jackie, will you call for a vote, please?
Counselor Hollitt.
Hi.
Counselor Forkum.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Counselor McClelland.
I.
Mayor Holston.
I.
All right, that passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Brian, for all your hard work. And thanks to the committee for putting all that information together and getting it going. We'll move on to 11. Do we have any reports, Brian?
Mayor, item 10.4 was added in.
Oh, sorry, 10.4, see it in highlights, SCA grant agreement. Brian.
Okay, this is the Small City Allotment Grant Agreement. The grant agreement is the exhibits. We're looking for a motion from floor to accept the agreement. It was, the city was awarded, after application, was awarded the ODOT Small City Allotment Grant for Berry Street improvements. The agreement requires the signature of the mayor and city administrator, which is why you're saying it. It's a two-year reimbursal grant for a hundred thousand. They can, the term can be extended if need be. But right now the project is tentatively planned for the second quarter of calendar year 2021. Both, and, and we're going to try to keep this under the grant agreement. Well, it is planned to be under the hundred thousand, so there'd be no fiscal impact to the city budget. And the options are to accept this grant agreement and do not accept the, or do not accept the agreement or recommending option one in the motions before you.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel, can we have a motion?
Sure, I move we accept the hundred thousand dollar Oregon Department of Transportation Small City Allotment Grant for Berry Street improvements.
Thank you. Do we hear a second?
I second.
Counselor Hollitt seconded. Counsel, do you have any discussion or questions?
I don't really have any discussion other than I'm really glad that we can see this finally come to fruition. And it's great.
I am, I am too. I am, I am, I am very pleased. Thank you, Brian, for getting this going and recognizing that there is a way that we can do this without having to go into, into massive debt or wait for the Taj Mahal to appear. And if you have questions about that, go to Brian and ask him what that means. So having said that, can we call for a vote?
Counselor Hollitt.
I.
Counselor Forkum.
I.
Counselor Whitney.
I.
Counselor McClelland.
I.
Mayor Holston.
I.
Counselor Kenyon.
I.
And that passes. Thank you very much, counsel. And people on Berry Street, hooray. We hopefully can have a block party when it's done. How's that sound? Okay, now let's move on then to, do we have any reports, Brian?
Let me see here. Yes, the admin committee did meet with a quorum. We brought aboard Counselor Kenyon as the, the counselor representative. And we're discussing a little bit about charter, redoing the charter and how everyone got on that road. But I'll kick it to Counselor Kenyon if she has any further comments from the admin committee.
Wonderful, go ahead, Counselor.
Um, the only other thing I have written down in my notes is that after talking about the charter review, I emailed out some documents that I had found and we were all going to review them and talk about it when we came back. But we had to actually cancel this month's meeting. And so we're, due to lack of a quorum. So hopefully we'll get some applicants before the next meeting. And I'm encouraging our committee to work on that.
Wonderful, good, sounds good. And let's see, did, has parks and community services met?
They met, they did meet. And we, number one, went over this plan a little bit and talked about some other items. I'll ask Counselor Whitney if she has anything to add.
Yeah, so like Brian said, we talked about the memorandum of understanding a little bit. And we also talked about some goals and that we set regarding like cleaning out some blackberries by Green Mars Park and just some little different things that we wanted to set a goal, as goals for committee. Let's see, what else did we talk about? We talked about the Amba Grant and the Diamond View Park, how the form and the cinder blocks were up for the bathroom and that Brian was submitting for financial reimbursement and that we've been getting a lot of positive feedback from the county and state. And that once the bathroom's done and we see how much money we have left, we'll determine what size of pavilion to put in. And we won't do that until after we know how much money we have. And then we're also working on our annual report. And then there was a, something about, the GOATs committee was in here somewhere, but I'm not quite sure where it fits in. But that we received a Union Pacific grant for the Rell Spur Trail to get that trail worked on. So, and I did not write down the dollar amount of that, but that we did receive that grant and we're talking, and the group was talking about trying to find a new grant for the trestle boardwalk to look at ways to possibly get that trestle redone so we can use it as a trail. But that's just something that was just the very beginning stages of talk. But that's kind of in a nutshell of what we talked about.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, can I ask Bobby a quick question?
Yes, please, go ahead.
On the pavilion, I could have swore several meetings ago, like the beginning of the year or even late last year, that that had already been ordered.
That's what I thought too, Don, I was going to ask the same question.
You know, I don't know, maybe they did order it. But I do know that we had to wait for the bathroom to be done and look at that cost before we could see exactly which size to order. So I don't know if Brian has more information on that because I didn't ask that question. I just.
I remember, I remember that it was picked out and ready to be ordered. But the way I remember it is that we were waiting to see how much the bathroom cost exactly to make sure that we didn't go over budget.
Okay.
That's correct. It's been selected, we, we looked at all the different options out there. And so if, once we get the idea, get the amount, we can go after the one, what do we need that fits in the budget.
Good. All right, any other questions? All right. And RTMP committee is kind of like, well, we haven't done anything. And we need to finish up giving you a, giving a proposal. And, and hopefully we can do that. So I don't have anything to report on that one. We're going to skip 12 because we did that. And let's move to 13.1. This is the strategic plan and I believe, Brian, I'll let you take it away.
Okay, it is 13.1 and this is the City of Oak Ridge Strategic Plan. The exhibits were the resolution and the plan itself, which was sent out Monday, I believe, is the day it went out, Monday night. We're looking for a motion from the floor to approve Resolution 23, let's see here, 24. There's a, that'll be corrected, whatever, one it is. But so the, the old plan, as you know, expired in 2018. And they, you know, during the, the lifetime of that plan, some significant goals were achieved, but not all of them, and that's not to be surprised about. So some of them are resource constrained and others are just, just didn't have the time to get to it. So some of that stuff rolled into the, to the new plan, which is fine too. So the impact here was none. The, the plan was developed and facilitated by a contractor, South Lamont Solutions, to afford family foundation grant of five thousand dollars. So the option here is to approve Resolution 23, 2020, or not approve it. We're recommending option one. But before we go into any motion or anything like that, I, I would like to offer the contractor, Sarah, a chance to give you a, kind of give the, the people that aren't as familiar as the, the council members themselves, an idea of the process we went through to get here and a brief look at what the plan is. So Sarah, I've enabled you to share, I believe, or if you're there, you want to take it away?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. So I think most of you know me. My name's Sarah Altamis Pope and I'm the executive director for South Lamont Solutions, the nonprofit that oversees the Southern Lamont Forest Collaborative and now also works with the Oak Ridge Air. And I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the process. Are you guys seeing the, the PowerPoint there?
No.
Here when?
No.
Nope. I always see is Brian's screen.
Oh, okay.
Let me stop sharing, Sarah, sorry, that's probably.
Okay.
There it is.
Okay, great. So we realized that, yes, you as counselors are very familiar with the process that you all went through and some of the public did participate, but it just might be nice to remind everybody of that process and the goals and hand it off to you after a little bit of presentation. So I will give you a quick overview and then I'm going to hand it off to Katie Fields, who is also a subcontractor with me developing this process and who is also now a rare participant for the, for South Lamont Solutions and has been working with us quite a bit. And, and then we can answer any questions that you might have or the public as you guys have your discussion. So first off, this was, whoops. Oh, boy. Not used to Zoom. Okay, it's going to click me all through. How do I get back?
Think you might want to stop sharing and reshare.
Yeah, I might have to. Okay, try that one more time. So many online platforms these days. Now it's already remembering it. Where, it seems like I should have, here we go, there's my slides down here. Okay, so we started this process last June and we were well into COVID restrictions at that point. So we had to readjust to have an online workshop process to do this. So we started with a pre-workshop survey to the counselors, asking them some of their goals or, yeah, just kind of broadly what they'd like to see for Oak Ridge in the next five years. And we took that information into a first workshop online. I think that, I think our workshops were around four hours, I'm doing visioning and brainstorming. And then we took all that information, organized it more for folks to understand it and took it back to them in the second workshop for developing and evaluating those goals and, and shaking it out to what really rose to the top as priority. And then took that information and shared it out to the community through both online surveys and in the water bill. And that survey was open for about a month. And then we collected all the input from the community, which I think was about 160 paper surveys and 35 or so online surveys, which altogether is a good number of surveys for our community of this size. And the council incorporated that feedback to finalize goals and objectives. And then second, or follow-up that we were hoping to get to as part of this process is not only develop goals and objectives, but to also flesh out the specific tasks to achieve those goals and kind of have a roadmap to what to work on for the next five years. So a subset of the counselors and then some additional community members came together to really flesh out that scorecard. So that was three additional meetings and a lot of homework for those folks. But we came up with a really good online living document that the city administrator will now have to help track progress on goals and, and then also help with reporting out to council. So now Katie will, oh, actually, let me tell you about the theme areas and then Katie will talk about the goals. As we got into the process of the brainstorming and developing, it became pretty clear that there was two areas that the council wanted to achieve outcomes. And one was within the, the area the council and the city themselves could be most influential. And that's internal, things that the city has internal control over. So through the budgeting process and allocating budgets could really influence these goal, these theme areas. So those theme areas were safe community and responsive government. And there was two more theme areas, strong economy and community vitality and livability that really depend, in order to achieve the goals and objectives, depended on partnering with organizations and entities within the community to achieve those goals, whether it be the business community or nonprofit groups or churches. To achieve some of these goals and objectives, there really is this need to, to work with others. So we, we wrote the plan and discussed these things within those theme areas, which really was kind of helpful in sorting out how we go from where we're at right now to achieving those goals through the objectives. So I'll hand this over to Katie to talk about the first theme area.
Thanks, Sarah. And I just want to reiterate some of what Sarah was saying in terms of these goals, kind of going through this process where they were the initial ideas that council brought forth in that pre-survey that then got modified through the, the course of the different meetings. And then the ad hoc committee that the city administrator convened did a lot of work to really build out who's responsible for each of these tasks under the goals. and what are going to be the steps to really achieving them. And so within those areas, we typically have two to three goals for each sub-area. And then underneath each goal, there are a couple of objectives that break it down a little bit more. But then those tasks that the ad hoc committee came up with with the city administrator are really the the way to get to these goals along the way. So I think Sarah, I think advanced an extra slide. So safe community. And these goals were also revised based on feedback from that public survey. So they were kind of in a general format, but then there were some wording changes that happened based on public feedback. So under goals for safe community, just for the benefit of those who maybe aren't seeing the screen very well, I'll just go ahead and read these aloud. So goal one was to ensure a safe community by partnering to protect people, property and the environment. And goal number two is to provide efficient, sustainable and equitable public safety services, including police, fire and emergency medical services. Then under responsive government on the next slide. We had three goals. In an open and transparent manner, effectively deliver services that citizens need, want and support. Goal number two was to provide facilities and infrastructure that support current and future needs. And the third and final goal was to manage finances in a fiscally responsible manner, ensuring long-term financial stability. And so that's the end for the internally controlled goals and then moving on to kind of the external partnership based themes. We had the strong economy goals, three there again. Goal number one, to improve the city's economy by focusing on increasing living wage, jobs, training and education opportunities for Oak Ridge residents. Goal number two of sustainably developing and to sustainably develop and market the recreational tourism industry in a way that benefits local business and residents. And the third goal, improve the city's economy by creating an atmosphere that is open to business. And then in the final theme area, which is community, livability and vitality. Goal number one, work with community partners to provide recreation, education and enrichment opportunities for citizens and youth. Goal number two, find creative ways to work with public and private partners to increase access to housing. And goal number three, to seek opportunities to revitalize the city's business corridors and neighborhoods to provide safe and beautiful places to live and work. And just as a final note, just a huge amount of gratitude to all of the people who were involved in the creation of this plan. Both council and the ad hoc committee put massive amounts of work into both the meetings and the homework that happened between meetings. And it was great to see so many members of the community. Great to see the huge amount of feedback that we got from that public survey to really make this possible and have a good way forward for the next five years for the city.
Great. Thanks, Katie. And if I can advance it, there it goes. And so you'll see that the plan, which will be available online on the city's website, once it's approved. The plan itself, I want to say, is like 12 to 15 pages, but then we have a bunch of resources that we've included as addendums. So you can see on there the community survey that went out and the survey results and how those were sorted. You can see the pre-council survey summary, the scorecard that we talked about, which is that living document spreadsheet that the city administrator can use to track tasks. There are screenshots in there. That's a bit of a living document, but it gives you an idea of what it looks like and how it measures progress. And then one of the outcomes of the the scorecard meetings was that there really is a need to have a shared resources. And when we say shared resources, but online, an online way that people can share documents in and files and information such as reports, but also a lot of other information with what community partners are doing in the community. And so we created a a set of folders that lives in the city's internal drive system that they can, there's a subset they can share with the public for shared resources. So as players change in time, we won't lose progress that's been made on a lot of these initiatives that take many years to achieve. So that was another, I guess, good outcome that came of this process. So that's in total what we have. Just to show you here the PowerPoint presentation, but like Katie mentioned, yeah, we just wanted to recognize all the time that everyone put into it and then also the community members that took the time to take the survey. The survey results came out really strong in support of of what the council had identified. So I think that confirmed that the goals that they identified and objectives were on the right track. So that was also really good. And then just everyone's flexibility doing this in the world of COVID and doing online very long meetings. So and I'd be happy to answer any questions or take comments from any of you that participated.
All right. Thank you, Sarah. And and all of you, you worked really hard on this. I really appreciate the way it came out. And and I really appreciate the council as well as the community who put so much effort into it. There's a lot of information there to coalesce. So council, do you have any comments that you'd like to make? And looking, I don't see, I don't see any hands waving, so. There we go. Before we go any farther than. And Brian, I think this is then this is motion Resolution 2420, correct?
Clear.
Yeah, 2420. Okay. So do I hear a motion, counselor?
I move we approve Resolution 2420.
232020?
Yeah, Mayor, it is. It is 232020. The typo is in the top there. So the resolution is 232020 and the next one is 24.
Do you, John, do you accept that correctly?
Okay, 232020, a resolution adopting the City of Oak Ridge Strategic Plan.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. That's Chrissy Hallit.
Counselor Hallit seconds it. Any further discussion, counselors? If there's no discussion, discussion, Jackie, will you call for a vote?
Counselor Whitney? Aye. Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor McClelland?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Hallit?
Aye.
Counselor Forcombe?
Aye.
And that passes. Thank you, counsel. Long time coming.
Mayor, if I might, I'd like to really thank Sarah and Katie for the work they do. The city definitely got more than $5,000 worth of labor out of them, I can tell you that. So thank you so much.
I believe they did, actually. That is true. All right. Let's move on then to 13.2. This is a a resolution for a social media policy. Brian, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, ma'am. It's like the mayor said, the social media policy, 13.2, you've got a resolution and the actual policy. The proposed council actions and motion to the floor to approve the Resolution 242020. So as you look at it and as I've been in the job, it it's become very important that we have some sort of policy out there when it comes to social media. And that's for staff and also for elected officials. So I did some research and and this this actual policy is is really a model that was that was put out there by the League of Oregon Cities. It's almost verbatim. There was, I don't think there's much change. So obviously their their attorneys, Patty, has probably been through this. So it's it's gotten the check from them. There is no impact. And the options are to approve this resolution or not approve it. We're recommending option one and the motions are for you.
Okay. Given the amount of information that is in here, I and the questions that it arises, I I have a few. Before moving into actually making a motion on this, I do have a couple of questions. I would like some more definition as far as defining. It it moves back and forth between employee and official. And then sometimes it says elected official. And I want to make sure that that we actually know specifically who is being talked about when, as it moves through this. That was a little bit confusing for me, but I did appreciate what it had to say. So I I just want to ask Brian, in your opinion, so in number two, or actually in number one, I guess, where it says each staff member and official. When it says official, is it talking about administration or is it talking about elected official?
That would be elected officials.
Okay.
Or appointed officials.
Elected or appointed officials. So those who serve from the community, either on the council or on boards. I would assume. Okay. All right. Thank you. That that helps me as I look at look at these. Is there any general questions that you have before we move into a motion, council?
I have, I have some things.
Yes, Chrissy, go ahead, please.
Oh, I looked up on the League of Oregon's website to see the differences from this policy to what they have on their website. And one of the key things I want to say that is actually on their website, I think in bold, is that it says these policies need to be ran through individual local governments' attorneys before they are passed essentially. So I, one, I'm curious if this policy has been through our attorney. Secondly, I did notice there is quite a large section under personal social media accounts that is not on the League of Oregon's example that they show. And I also think this needs to be ran by the attorney. I really feel like this policy limits some areas for counselors to be able to talk to our citizens. And I do remember in many of the League of Oregon, some of their recommendations were actually to get out there and get a pulse on what's going on in your community. And those types of things. And I feel like when I read this, this policy is very much trying to limit counselors into talking to their community and I'm just really highly against that.
If I might respond, Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So the section on the personal was, as I did my research, part of that research was public records requests and the requirements for if you are functioning as a counselor, then there is a right, the people have a right to request public records from that social media. So while the city has the ability to archive the city website and the city Facebook page and any and we right now I have service that can archive up to 10 sites. So my concern was was that, you know, if if you started functioning as a council on a personal website, then it's your responsibility to archive all that and and Facebook's not going to respond to it. And they do delete things. So there is a process to to retain all that information. But it comes at a cost and I'm not sure if a counselor has a personal account that they're willing, gonna want to put that bill. And the other problem is is that even though if it's not archived, it really is a liability to the city because they'll come back and sue the city because we're the ones ultimately responsible for providing the public records. So that that's kind of why that ended up in there as I did the research. So and your other question, no, the attorney has not been through this document.
Chrissy, do you want to finish before I go into that?
Did you have any further comment, Chrissy?
Go ahead, Dawn.
So I was concerned with the same things Chrissy was. Considering that that one section on social media was not on the league's recommendations, that that made me think, well, where could this have come from? So I did some Googling and found on the Oregon Public Records Law and Social Media Guidance for Oregon Government Agency, it's actually all written for the agency to all the laws that are written so far surround like cities managing their own Facebook pages or or their own websites. Nowhere is it mentioned public officials. So I thought it was really odd that not only is the league not recommending anything, but neither is the Oregon, state of Oregon for public officials. Also, I attended the League of Oregon Cities training today, all day. And they, Patty Mulvihill was the the speaker and she actually specifically said that there there are the judicial system is not up to date with preparing social media law, let's put it that way. So I feel like we should do more research into all of this. And also, obviously, the the part about the League of Oregon had a disclaimer that said cities should consult with their city attorney and/or the CIS pre-law legal department before adopting an email and social media policy to be sure that it complies with all the aspects of the law. So I definitely feel like we should look into that before we adopt anything.
Thank you, counsel.
For policy. Oh, and then I, one other comment that I had was or a question maybe is that when we do get to the point where we're ready to do something, I'm wondering if we shouldn't have a city staff policy that goes in their handbooks and then a city officials' policy, and even if they're the exact same, but but separated towards each one and the city official one would go into our council rules. Because otherwise I'm concerned that, you know, as counselors come on in the future, how are they gonna know to look up a policy that might be in a book somewhere at City Hall that for for staff to know that these things would be, you know, rules they have to follow as well.
Are you complete? Good. I, counselor, let's see, I have, Counselor Whitney, do you have any thoughts?
You know, I've been thinking about it a lot and I I understand and agree with part of what Chrissy and Dawn are saying. And I do think it's important that our attorney review this. But I have to say that I do like the, it's pretty much the same policy for staff as it is for elected officials and appointed officials, because I think it just sets the correct tone. And it holds us all accountable to the same standard. And I like that. I don't that we necessarily need it embedded in two or three different places. Having the same thing in two or three different places can make it hard to update as you have updates that might happen on this document. But it could be referenced within our in our charter with our city council rules. So I wouldn't want to see see it separated out and have the same document in all these various places because I think you just run the risk of things being missed in the future.
Thank you, Counselor Whitney. Counselor Forcombe, do you have any thoughts?
I agree with all of them. I think one thing, oh, the lawyers need to go over this and figure out what they're gonna do. You know, I mean, that's the biggest thing. And then, yeah, like Bobby was saying too, we don't need it, you know, here and there. It should be one standard one for everybody.
Thank you, Counselor Forcombe. Counselor McClelland, I see your hand, Counselor Kenyon, but I want.
I know.
Counselor McClelland, do you have any thoughts?
I would agree with what Paul just said. I do think it's probably needs to be reviewed by the city attorney, because if there ever is a violation, the city attorney is probably gonna have to get involved. As well as the idea that what Counselor Whitney had said as well, if you start splitting this and putting it all over the place, it does just make it more difficult for updates in the future.
Okay. Counselor Kenyon, you had something to say?
Thanks. I actually found another spot that was concerning to me on records retention. In that section at number three, it says an email inbox should not be used for storage. The email should be printed or stored electronically and put into an appropriate file.
Right.
Blah, blah, blah. So and I'm sure that that, or I think I read somewhere that that also applies with the social media issue. And my concern there would be if every single employee and And my concern there would be if every single employee and every single official and every single committee member was making an electronic file or copy of every single email transaction that they have to and from, you know, replies and whatnot, and forwarding all of that to the records retention person to store. It seems like we would need not only a single full-time records retention person, but maybe even more than one, because that that seems like a lot of information that they're going to have to be sorting and storing. And when I was reading through the law stuff, they have to actually sort it by how long it has to be retained for, not just like who emailed it or who who said what to who. But certain topics go under certain amounts of time that they have to be stored for. And do we have a budget for a full-time records person to manage all of that?
No, the answer is no, we don't, but
A couple of comments, Mayor.
Looking at that.
Just a minute, Brian. So, yeah, Dawn, a lot of that is archaic language. But we have the ability to do that when, because of this software program that we have and and use and use. It sounds as much more onerous than it actually is, but actual record retentions for the state governments, for the universities, that type of thing, is that complicated? We don't have to get that, get that complicated at all. But I agree, the language is a little confusing.
So what do you mean? Do we send all of our our stuff out to someone to store?
No, no, Brian, you can speak to that. I think you were going to explain what we have.
Right, so number one, not all email is is required to be retained. There's only certain types of emails that must be retained by the law. But that said, the the easiest way to do that is just to archive the emails after you've gone through them, and if you delete the ones that aren't needed, you go through and you archive it, and it goes to the network server, at least for the city staff. It would go to the network server and be archived there, and it's searchable, and you can pick up whatever you need, and it doesn't have to stay in your inbox. So that's kind of the the idea there. For counselors, there are ways to archive in clouds or ways to archive onto discs or or thumb drives. So it's just a matter of archiving, and it's not going to be an onerous thing for the for the city staff.
So would, so maybe we should consider just changing the wording here, because it makes it sound like you have to either print it or or store it electronically and put it into
That's what archiving does, is store it electronically, and it does it automatically if you if you set it up.
So, you know, given the amount of, I mean, we have questions, and I have questions too. You know, there are, there are some things in here that that I'd like to have a little more definition about, explanation. I know that we all, we differ on on how we feel about the management of social media and the use of social media as elected officials, and I think we need to really hammer through that. So one of the reasons why I asked Brian to 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 bring forward a social media policy is, number one, we need one. We need to have one. That is important as a council that we that we come to an understanding of how we're going to use social media and and understand what the what the limits are as well as the opportunities. I mean, it's, you know, it's not all a bad thing, and it's not all a good thing, and we need to have some regulation. So my my suggestion would be that counsel continue to take a look at this and look at it in a positive light as this is something that is good for our community to have, because it it increases the transparency that we have with our community as to how we're going to use things. And then perhaps schedule a work session to talk about it. How we and share our ideas about how we can adapt the social media policy that is both responsible as well as transparent, that we can all agree upon. And and sooner than later, I don't, you know, we attempted this a couple of years ago, and it got bogged down. But I really would like to to come away with a social media policy for our council as we move in, especially since we're going to have new counselors coming in. This is something I think that is really important. So, given that
I have, I have two things I want to say real quick.
Counselor Hollis, go ahead.
One thing is, I think this might be a good thing that the admin committee look at, and they might be able to find other policies that other cities already have in place. And also, I think this is a good thing. I agree, there are good components about having a social media policy. And I think this is a really good opportunity to include our new council at the beginning of the year.
Um, I'd like to, I I don't disagree with you, but at the same time, I really would like to have a work session with counsel about this. I I I think that there are some cases where we need to really go through it ourselves. I can, I can foresee it going to an admin committee, coming forth to counsel, and then we're still going to have to go have a work session to go over it to just to really know that we've all heard and hammered out all of all of our thoughts.
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
Yeah. So let's go ahead and 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 schedule a work session to review this. And in the meantime, you know, I did my due diligence too and looked around at social media policies and looked to see, you know, where it is. I had a brief conversation, you know, about social media policy with LOC, and it is one of those very vague things we're moving into. How do you, how do you regulate? How do you use it? What is the best use? What is the worst use? It is all kind of amorphous right now, and communities are learning how to use it to their benefit and and learning to be cautious where caution is due. So I think we can, we can figure something out for ourselves and then get it approved by the attorney to make sure that we're not violating anybody's rights, that we're not violating our charter, that we're not violating our community's rights, and all those things that attorneys are really good at. So, let's see, we have, we also have some, well, I'll bring it up later. We have an opportunity coming up that I want to do a work session for soon because of something that's going to be brought to us on council at our next council meeting. I think this is actually going to take a full work session of its own. So let's schedule this for after the new year. Brian, we talked about a work session for training counsel on economic development and it's and a council's impact on economic development in communities. That was in January, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so let's knowing that the beginning of the year is always full of meetings, and it will be again this year. Let's, let's look for a date that we can do this in February and do a council. That way, we'll have gotten through our new counselors getting seated and in, and this will be their first test, as that, well, maybe second test. So can we bring, Counsel, are you okay if we bring back a date to you? Or Brian pulls the the counsel and work with this? Okay.
Yes, Kathy, did you, did I just hear you mention something about needing to do a work session on a different topic before our next meeting?
Possibly, and we will, we will get into that in just a minute here.
Oh, okay.
See, I was testing everybody to see if you were really listening to the little
We were listening.
This calendar is such a tough month.
I know it is a tough month, isn't it? Okay, so so we are just going to table this until we can have a work session, and then we will move forward after that.
So, and I want to confirm that we will have a legal review of this first before our work session.
Would that be why?
Yes, we can.
Can I say one thing? It makes more sense to me that we hash it out first, because there's no sense in them looking at something that we don't want anyways. That would be, that would be double handing, that would be double the cost for them to look at it twice.
Okay. Yeah, I just, yeah, I just, for me, I just wanted to see what may be legally sufficient in there right now before we decide that it's something we really like and want. But, yeah, I hear what you're saying, I agree.
Okay.
I just want to see something that's legally sufficient and that's not going to stifle everybody's, you know, freedom of speech, so.
Nobody wants to be stifled. Okay, that sounds good, that sounds good. All right, so let's move on to 15.1. And this is submission of applications for the planning commission. And Brian, if you will introduce this, please?
Yes, it is to consider the appointment of citizens to the planning commission vacancies. And you see, the applications were attached. We're looking for a motion from the floor to appoint applicants or applicant into vacant positions. It's certainly seated with seven citizens, five seats are filled. Two commissioners have expiring terms this year, giving a total of four vacancies. Three of the vacancies have a four-year term and one vacancy a three-year term. The city council has three applications to review. Your choices are to appoint applicants or applicant to fill the vacant seats or do not appoint or fill all the seats.
Thank you.
We're recommending to fill or option one. And I've got a motion there before you, and I've, yes, I believe all of the applicants, I saw them dial in, hopefully they're still in.
Okay.
If you desire to interview.
Yes, let's do that, let's do that. So, counsel, with your permission, I'm just going to go down through the through the list and ask each each applicant to introduce themselves and give you an opportunity to to ask some questions.
I'd actually like to have some discussion before we get to that.
Okay, what did you want to bring up before we move into the individual applicants?
Well, specifically, that there's only one vacancy right now. Also, there's a mention here of a three-year term for one of the seats, and that's not true. They're, they're all four years. And the one that Audi filled had already been, if that's the one that he that we think is a three-year term, he had been the second person to fill that, so it's actually got two years left, not three. So there's that, but also the posting that was done in in November said there was one vacancy, not not five or four, whatever this says. And also every year, every, every odd-numbered year for the last 10 years, I think it is, for eight years, we have always appointed the seats in January for the for the ones that are being vacated at the end of December. So I'm not sure why this is even on the agenda the way that it is.
So
I have something to add too.
Hold on, Counselor Hollis. So I I just want to point out that that if all of them expire and have a four-year term, it says four years, but they they pair it between 22 and 24.
Kathy, is your keyboard covered?
No, actually, it's not. Does it sounding funny?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can, let go, try again.
Okay, how how am I silent? Thank you for asking. Okay, so you, you're, you're objecting to a process that we have here right now and objecting to that we're not following a process that we followed in the past. I'm hearing lots of scratch too. So I'm going to ask everybody to mute themselves if they aren't counsel right now. Maybe we can get rid of some of the scratch.
You're sounding better.
Am I sounding better? Okay. And and so if you have these, I'm going to, I'm just going to point this out in in general. So as when we get, when we get our agenda and we get our our packet, if you if you have things that are this big about what's happening and you don't understand, I would suggest that you call the city administrator so that we can review that rather than waste the time of having to bring people forward and then say, oh, well, this isn't right. So, did we post, Brian, one position? Somebody has needs to mute up. If you are not muted, mute yourself, please.
Let me mute everybody and then
Okay.
Does that figure out how to do that?
Thank you. Okay, I'm still hearing lots of background.
Go work it.
Oh, there you go. That's better. How is that sounding better? Everyone? Good, good, okay. Counsel. There you are, Dawn. So if you have a, first of all, Brian, did we have, did we post for only one position, but we have multiple applicants?
Yeah, I became aware after that posting that we had two terms expiring. And I do have a public hearing in January, which is probably why I was aggressive in getting these candidates up here.
Yeah.
We can have a full experienced commissioner going into January. But, yes, I, I, at the time, there was only one vacancy, that was Audi's. And so that's what I advertised for.
And so we're using the multiple applications that we received for the one vacancy to fill these?
Well, no, you're, you received one for the vacancy, and that was Mr. Barclay. And then the other two are reapplying for their positions because their terms are expiring.
Mr. Barclay, Mr. Barclay's actually says that he's applying for a full term now.
He prefers the full year, in his application, it does say he prefers a four-year term as opposed to a three-year term.
Okay. Okay, so all of
Oh, I, I have, sorry, I have a question. Wasn't Lauren on this committee or the commission?
Yes, yes.
So that's another vacancy.
So I have something to say too.
Yes, Counsel.
Part of the new council's job is to be able to select committees. So if we're going to pre-select positions that their terms don't even end, that's really unfair to our oncoming counselors. And as Dawn pointed out before, it hasn't been done in the past, and there's a reason why, because that's a part of the job of the new council is setting, selecting those new committees. You know, I understand filling a vacant seat. What I don't think is fair is selecting terms that haven't even expired yet. I mean, that that just seems very unfair to take that opportunity away from our new council.
All right, so I I've heard your your objections. Counselor Kenyon, wait a minute. I've heard your objections, I have, I understand what you're saying. I am going to ask that we table all of these and apologize to all of the applicants. And then we'll bring these up and post them again, which means that we will not have an active planning commission in order to do a public hearing. But that's what we're going to do so that we do it consistently and we do it right. I want to point out to Counselor Hollis and and adamantly disagree, because it sounds like she feels there is a bit of conspiracy there. There is no conspiracy there, no one is trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. We're just trying to be proactive so that we can have a planning commission that can be up and running and deal with land issues, youth issues, as charged by the county and the charter in an effective and efficient manner. So, um, I am going
For clarification, I'm not saying there's a conspiracy, conspiracy at all. I was just saying that that's an opportunity for the new council that we need to be considering, that's all.
Well, the council that's currently sitting on the dance is the official council, and they don't go into lame duck status. And I will point that out. Let's, let's go ahead and table this, because
So I have some comments before you move on.
Please go ahead.
Currently, we have one vacancy, well, actually, two vacancies, correct?
Correct.
And so we have five, currently five seats that are filled, two that will be terminating. So that would leave only three filled seats come January. And that is an issue, that is something that we need to address, and that is important. However, we can fill vacancies.
Yes.
And I think we should do that. We do have someone on here that has applied for one of the vacancies, and I think we should at least at a minimum, do that to make sure that this commission is still able to function from January.
So that would mean that we have two vacancies that we can fill and two that we that we will hold applicants for and repost and fill by the end of January. We can post them on January 1st. Is that, is that in line with what you're thinking about? Does that, is that in line with what you're thinking, Bobby?
Yes. Yeah, and personally, I don't have a problem with filling them ahead of time, especially considering that we only have five seats filled and we have something coming up that's important.
That needs to.
And I, I, I agree with being proactive. I tend to lean that way myself. But I do think in trying to find a compromise with how all of us are filling, I think at least filling that vacancy is important.
Okay.
To making sure that this can move forward next year.
I'm sour, sorry, Counsel Whitney. I'm just trying to keep back everybody here. Counsel Kenyon, I see your hand.
Thank you. I disagree about filling a seat. I mean, I guess if Mr. Barclay is still with us and he's interested in the two-year seat, that would be one thing. But the seat that unfortunately Lauren is no longer in expires at the end of this month. So it's not even a vacant seat yet. We wouldn't want to fill something for less than a month. We would still have to post for 30 days to fill that seat for the next four-year term as well as the other two that are expiring at the end of this month. Actually, there's one, two.
No, there's, there's four that will be vacant by January. Right.
Yeah, and we too, we have, we have two vacant seats regardless of the weather.
No, we only have.
Regardless of whether Lauren only went to the end of this year or not. But there's only one applicant. I guess we could ask Stan if he wants to apply for that. But I was just trying to find a compromise and to help make sure that this commission can function come January 1st.
Okay, well, you know, we're, I don't think we need to find a compromise on this. We have, we have rules that, that govern this and we aren't going to fill seats until they're vacated. And we're not going to start, although while I see it sufficient, we don't want to set that precedent. So we're not going to do that. And nor are we going to fill it pro temp temporarily for two weeks until we repost because of the passing of Mr. Cole.
But we're not going to even try to fill a two-year vacant, two or three-year vacancy.
We have one, we have one vacancy that we can fill. We have applicants and we can choose from that vacancy, those applicants. And then if we invite those applicants, we will hold on to their application. They do not need to reapply, but we will open it up for additional applications to anybody who wants to apply for those that are remaining in, in January. And that would be three seats. So, um, council, we are going to be looking at these applicants and considering them for one. And that one seat is a two-year position, I believe, at this point. And when we direct the city administrator to post on January 1st, or actually you can post ahead for a vacancy in January 1st, beginning January 1st, or January 7th. And take applicants for that. So, is that clear? That kind of makes sense? Okay, so having done that, I know that we have applicants awaiting. Let's go through and ask them to introduce themselves and we'll move forward. Mr. Custer, I believe that you are first on my list anyway here. See on my piece of paper. Once again, I'm hearing a whole lot of scratch going on. So I'm going to mute myself and anybody who is speaking, please mute. George, go ahead and unmute yourself. And it's.
Yes.
Um, Mayor?
Yes, I'm here.
Mayor, I'm really sorry, but I'm not sure why would we be interviewing someone who's already a planning commissioner for a seat that's open right now? Now he's already filling a seat.
I agree.
You can't fill two seats at once. You're muted, Mayor.
Sorry, I was muted. You're right, Counsel Kenyon. Counsel, Mr. Custer, you already hold a seat. Mr. Weimhold, you already hold a seat. We're going to go. We have wasted your time and you have my. And we will ask that you reapply for the seat that you're in as soon as possible. Brian, for the empty seats that are going to be up beginning January 1. And we will hold your applications, Mr. Weimhold and Mr. Custer, if you so desire. Please indicate to the administrator if you do. And then we will re-interview you on January 7th. Is that our first meeting? Anyway, first meeting. Okay. All right, so we have one seat and then we have one applicant. That would be Mr. Barclay and that is for, desires a four-year term, but there is a two-year term open. Mr. Barclay, do you feel wish to, to apply for that seat?
Sorry, I had to work the unmute. Some people mentioned it. I was actually surprised that the, the applications were being considered to be made to the process.
Mr. Barclay, I asked a question. Wish to be considered for the two-year term?
No.
Okay, thank you.
We'll reapply in January.
Perfect. That sounds great. That sounds great. Okay, so with that, we do not have any more business to do with this. And we will move on. Okay. You have been invited to the following. Okay, everybody who's, someone really, really loud, mute yourselves. Anyone on TV is coming through. Those that are listening, please mute yourselves if you are not a counselor. Thank you. That's better. Much better. Thank you. Okay, so let's talk about something that has come up just recently. Once again, I'm hearing lots of feedback. If you are not a counselor, mute your phone. George, would you please mute yourself?
I'll be hitting.
You're not.
Take it easy.
Ta-da, now. Silence is golden. Wonderful. I just wanted to bring up that we are going to have presented to us in December at our next meeting, a, an opportunity that is coming to the OIP and not, not as an individual or, or a business, but you were all invited to participate in a biomass conference. And some, I believe some of the counselors dialed into that. We have more information and have gotten more information about that. And at our next council meeting, we are going to be asked to commit some money, which I think, and Brian, please, you know, interrupt me or correct me. And Sarah, if you're still here, I would appreciate your input too. In essence, for a feasibility type of study. And this is something that has a timeliness to it. So we definitely will have to talk about it and make some decisions. Sarah, can you give us kind of an overview of this? Because, council, what I'm going to ask you as you're listening to Sarah is, knowing how difficult it is right at a council meeting to absorb some of the information that we get that is a little more technical, I'm suggesting that perhaps we have a quick hour meeting before the council or on a day before, you know, during that week to get more details so that we will have a better understanding of what we will be voting upon. So Sarah, can you quickly give us a kind of sketch overview of what this is?
Sure. Wasn't quite ready to do this and I hate to say too much to give people the wrong impression. But basically, what it is, is an ask to partner with a county to pay a consulting firm, seed funds, to develop a grant proposal for quite a large grant to analyze a feasibility study for biomass, similar to a model that's being used in Hood River, which has been quite successful over the last year. And it would be recruiting multiple entities into the industrial park to utilize wood products. So not a mill, but similar milling capacities, post and pole, upgrading firewood, chipping, biochar, uses for mostly wood that is left out in the woods right now and wood waste. This is something that's, this is Oregon as part of and the Forest Service and a bunch of other partners. And this grant opportunity, the reason there's a time constraint is the grant's due January 20th. So if the city and county were going to move forward, they would need to get them working on it right away. So it'll be a bit of a sprint to get all the right partners in the proposal and the right matching funds to be able to qualify because it is a one-to-one match. So, uh, the Devonshire Group, which is the consulting firm and they're already working with Business Oregon and the Forest Service, they would be the ones that'd be writing proposal. The city and the collaborative would help with components of that. But they are willing to come to the next council meeting or do a work session and bring some additional members and some groups or businesses that are working in Hood River to kind of talk about this model and why they feel like it's successful. And then also why, why we think it'd be a very competitive proposal coming out of Region 6 to the Wood Innovation Fund, which is an $8 million grant fund that the Forest Service puts up every single year. So, it's just an opportunity that's landed in our lap in the last couple of weeks. And with the holidays and everything, we're just trying to pull it together. So I do think Kathy's right. A work session's probably a little bit better, more discussion format. You can ask more in-depth questions. We're not trying to do a 20-minute presentation during council meeting late at night.
Yeah. Thank you. Counsel Kenyon, I see your hand.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could get as much information as possible in writing even way before we do a work session so we can like prepare ourselves with all kinds of questions?
Yeah, I think that's the best resource, Dawn. We did send out notes from that meeting. It had several links to it. That did come to you. All of council was on that invite. So if you go back in your emails and look through that, I can definitely resend it.
Well, I read the first one, but I guess I'm not aware that we had a second one. Sorry. I'll review all of that and see if I have questions. Would you be the appropriate contact?
Yeah, I mean, at a certain point, I want to hand this off to the Devonshire Group and Business Oregon. But I can help field for now. But at this point, we really, I think we'll be looking at work session either next week or the week after. So, so I don't know, it'll be them that will give you the resources.
So, um, what I'd like to do is, is have Brian query the council to see when a, when a work session date would work for all of us before our next council meeting in December. And like Sarah said and Dawn asked about, there was an email sent out. Sarah, if you wouldn't mind rescinding that email with that, with that information that was attached to it so that you can use that, this opportunity to read through the material and, you know, make some notes and ask some questions. And I'm sure Sarah and, and I and city administrator don't mind if you just want to shoot questions and say, what does this mean? What does this mean? Because it's, it's in, it's detailed. And there's a lot of verbiage there that, that, that I know as I read through, if I hadn't been on the collaborative for, for already four or five years, I would have looked at and gone, what is that? So don't be afraid to just ask all the questions you need to. Then at a work session, we can come together and, and say, okay, how, what does this mean? Let's look at the bigger picture. What does this mean for Oak Ridge? Is it viable? Do we want to support this and then move forward with that? If we do or if we don't or however we want to go. So, council, if you're okay, we'll just have Brian query us and, and find a, a work session time?
Do you mean now or outside of this meeting?
Outside of the meeting. I'm sorry, Dawn. I should have clarified.
Oh, go ahead. A quick go back.
Yes.
I don't think I started with this. I should have. The initial ask of council is, is going to be for $6,500 to hire the consulting firm to develop a proposal and that'll be matched by the city. So it's not a huge financial upfront ask, but it is one that you guys will have to approve because it would be a contract with that entity. But we, we think it can come from the industrial park fund. So that was what this initial meeting will be about. But there would definitely be future meetings as we get closer to the proposal that would go in and then if things were to come of it.
And I think you said that there would be a match by the county, correct?
Yeah, sorry, Lane County said that they would not.
Lane County is going to match that 6,500.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's what our initial conversation will be. That's what we'll be asked to look at and consider at our next council meeting. And in preparation for that, I'm suggesting this work session.
Okay.
Okay, so council, are you, can I get a, a head nod from or a thumbs up from folks? Did I see John's thumbs up and so that we can put together a work session? And Paul's got a yellow, yellow thumb and there's Dawn's thumb. And Chrissy, I'm assuming you have a thumb up, but you just haven't gotten there yet because this sounds. There you go. Okay. Awesome. Okay, so we'll look forward to seeing something come from Brian. And I have it open to public comment. Do we have any public comments at the WAC?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on anyone who is dialed in? Please unmute yourself and state your name. Hearing none. I believe that at, we are concluding this meeting at 9:07 and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Bye.